Wherever you want, I don't care. We can plug this thing in right here, we can plug right to your left. Or you can put this back on if you want. The post-it effect at last. If you're offering one of the four-year seats. Four-year seats, two-year seats. Four-year seat, yes, two-year seat, no?
Okay.
She's got my price. I'll take it, but for four years, not for two. There's only four of these senior positions. So I take it and push somebody else aside and we have our votes, okay? Because we get the... I might recommend asking some super members who come up next. Okay. Where do you want, wherever you need to be seated. Where do you want to fight right? Right over there, okay.
I'm just going to sit here. He's got my chair.
Uh, I've been really depressed since I was a kid. Yeah, I got hurt to go to Vegas. When I got back, what is it again? Big question.
I don't want to know.
I wanted to cover that, but I got hit with a big shot. I did a lot of soul service. That's a big fire. I want to ask a real question.
Yeah, that's right.
I have to push a big toe up. I prefer a tiptoe or frog in the tooth. South, they... They sit around, but the thing is south... Funny part is she's over the age of her head. College, she was grad. They were newspapers. It's only illegal work. They said they gave a beer little ad to it. So that's why you see the big stuff. The doorstop is nice, always got a job. So I'm not sporting it. I could write sports, that's my poor team. My school's a girl group team. And I hear...
Stuff that makes...
I've been entertaining, I've been... I got stuck in that, that career for a while. That's a pretty good job. See, they do all, they go out here with heat and quit. College, college, college shit. I had to turn the baggage around. That pissed them off. I didn't get nothing.
I'm here. I don't need to do that many more than here. You're in my seat.
You're wanting to move closer to me?
No, I'm a camera artist.
So we can switch. I didn't get one of those, that made life easier.
But we had to get another because we had these tapes.
Oh, yeah.
The tape star, I had to take out any conflict right there. Not to do it. So we got to do camera.
I like the smaller, compact.
That's what I like, the small. And this one is a ring.
Can you take pictures with it? I gotta get one. I gotta get one of those IG out my car. For certain reason, I'm not fighting all that fight. Certain reason, I'm not fighting all that fight. I just let the camera rip and go in the corner and go to sleep. Seventy, seventy point, can't sleep at this point. You missed the fight. Oh, I've been doing this. Really about, interested in government about really twenty years. But I've been, I've been a jerk. I think that's...
Y'all already have one of these?
I know, I just take pictures of artists. I get a picture of them. All right, speakers up there. I get a picture of that. I got a, I'm behind on a couple of stories I got to release. And I still got the Josh Patterson where I have a friend yet. That was funny. And all that, all those dudes. I got the city address, I gotta run. In fact, I got a whole bunch of city addresses I gotta run. All the cities. Been a one-man show, it's so easy to get behind.
Well, he does all the technical stuff.
So y'all putting everything on YouTube, or y'all use Vimeo? Did y'all make those videos of Josh here on YouTube? They did those. Yeah, I got, I got sent those. People's like this. And I do somebody that just goes to conversations, like, just look at these.
And he's a good guy. You know him, you really know him.
I like to talk to him. Tell him to give me a call.
He's never talked to him? Your kids? You don't know Josh?
I know Josh, but you know, I never had a conversation with Josh. I just kind of just...
He's nice. He's a nice guy. He's excellent.
Okay, I'm used to that.
But he's used to it, so?
Oh, yeah, he's no filters, I call it.
Doesn't he?
Yeah, yeah, don't need one.
When did you start this?
Yes, I started this, uh... Started doing it, I did radio first, it's local talk radio, it's music radio in Old Seven. And then at Old Nine, we had the drill.
Welcome to the March first work session. Thank you very much for coming out tonight. Jennifer Roach, all members of Mayor Council present. At this time, we'll take public comments and then we'll get into business of council meeting. Councilor Public Comments on my right. On my left. We'll get into our agenda items. The first item that we have tonight is under old business. And it's a discussion of the CID, Community Improvement District. As for those of you that have the agenda, you've got some background there. Basically, a CID is a special taxing mechanism designed to provide increased maintenance, security, aesthetic improvements in the areas authorized to establish such improvement districts. CID's are not controlled by the government, they're basically allowed by state law to form by permission and the petition of the business community they impact and serve. Statute, state statute provides that businesses and landowners who choose to tax themselves may form CID's in order to pay for it and maintain various improvements outlined in their adopted plans. So tonight, we have a couple CID's around us right now. We have the CID West and the CID South, is that correct, Gerald? And at this time, I'm gonna call upon Gerald McDowell, who is the CID Director. He's gonna give us a presentation on our CID.
Let me get you on high, Gerald. Here, any of those on the podium, just push them up.
Yeah, I'm gonna get one turned over for you.
Sure, thank you. They have it in their package.
Oh, whoops, okay. I jumped the gun, so we'll go ahead with him and then I'll back up. I missed the informal discussion and I called just about that. Gerald, you have the floor, I'm sorry about that. Good evening. Mayor Coleman and council members, I thank you for an opportunity tonight to come and to go over the information about Community Improvement District and to answer any questions that you may have this evening. You have in your hands there our annual, our first annual report that's hot off the presses. The mayor, as Mayor Coleman indicated, there are two Community Improvement Districts that are surrounding the airport. The Airport West CID was formed in 2014 in Fulton County. And then Airport South was formed in 2015 in Clayton County. As of January first of this year, 2016, the two CID's agreed to have a joint administration of CID's. And so the staff of Airport West is now managing both CID's. Airport West and Airport South. And they also voted to change their name in the marketplace to be called the Atlanta Aerotropolis CID's for the next Community Improvement Districts. The two CID's are separate entities. They have, they each have a board of directors and they will remain separate, but they will be managed jointly by one staff, one executive director and staff. And will be managed out of the same office for administration purposes. The annual report that you have, have in your hand and the presentation that I prepared for tonight, I won't go through the entire presentation so that we won't be here till midnight. But what I will cover tonight, and then I will take any questions that you have, is the expansion process. State legislation allows for Community Improvement Districts to expand their boundaries each year that they are in existence. When a CID is first formed, it is formed for a six-year period. And during that six-year period, the CID can expand their boundaries. And expanding the boundaries, boundaries meaning to include additional parcels of property within the existing CID. What I'm gonna go through very quickly for you tonight is the expansion process that's underway is for the Airport West CID. The one that's located in Fulton County. That's the one I'm gonna be addressing with you tonight. Both CID's are going, are going through the expansion process. But the one that pertains to Hayville is the Airport West CID because it's located in Fulton County. Under the guidelines for expansion, any additional properties that are added to an existing CID must be turned in to the county tax assessor by April first of each year. And then the tax assessor will certify that the requirements for expanding the CID has been met and will make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for the county that the expansion be approved. Then the Board of Commissioners will actually pass a resolution approving the expansion of the CID, which will then enable the tax commissioner to include those parcels for, in the tax digest for that calendar year. The process that we have outlined, with CID, we have hired a consultant to take us through this process. This consultant started like in November of 2015. And the process goes, as I stated, all the way through April of this year. And so since November, property owners have been identified and those property owners have been, have received collateral material, if you will, about the CID and about the expansion process. What I would mention to you, the expansion process for Hayville is we're gonna take a two-phase approach. In phase one, which will be 2016, our focus is gonna be on those property owners who have contacted the CID and expressed to us a desire to be, to be a part of the CID. And then phase two will be to include additional property owners through an educational process. So what we started like in November and we will continue throughout 2016 and to 2017 is educating all property owners about what CID is, the value and the benefit that it brings to the community and of course, the value and the benefit that it will bring to the city of Hayville. And then once, once we have informed those property owners, then they will have an opportunity to express if they want to, if they want to be a part of the CID as well. So in this, in this first phase, where we are focusing on April one, we've had Portia to express a desire to be part of the Airport West CID, Wells Fargo, Delta Airlines. So those properties are in the same general area. And so our objective by April first is to make the necessary connections so that those property owners can be part of the Airport West CID. And then as we go through this expansion process and this educational process, if there are other property owners in Hayville who would like to be a part of the CID in 2016, of course, we will include those property owners as well. And so once we, we turn in that paperwork, and so there's a, actually there's a document, a legal document that is referred to as a consent form. This document is executed by the property owner. And when the property owner execute that document, that property owner is agreeing to be part of the CID and to, and agreeing to pay the CID assessment that comes within a part of the CID. So that document is turned, is then turned into the county. And as we, as we have outlined here, it will be turned into the county in April. And then it will go through the process where the county's tax assessor will certify the process, will certify the documents, will make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. And then we'll also make recommendations, excuse me, will, will, the Board of Commissioners will approve the expansion of CID. For your, for your council, your action at that point would simply be to acknowledge what the Fulton County Board of Commissioners has done. Because when property from your city becomes a part of the CID, then you have an opportunity as a board, as a council, to appoint one of those Hayville property owners to become a member of the Board of Directors for, for the Airport West CID. So part of that process would be, I think in your pocket, I gave you an example of a resolution that another city got used. And when you, when you execute that resolution, you also, we will provide you a list of the property owners from Hayville that became a part of the CID in 2016. And then from that list, you will select one of those property owners to be your representative on the Board of Directors for the CID. Once, once that happens in, in the July timeframe, any current board seat that is up for reelection is all property owners, all existing property owners, including those who are now part of the CID as a result of the expansion, will be notified of this election. And any property owner will be eligible to be, to be a member of the CID or to run for those board seats. And then once that election is held, and those new board members are sworn in, and then the information is passed on to the tax commissioner of Fulton County. And when the tax bills go out in September, all existing property owners, as well as new property owners from the expansion, will receive a notice, excuse me, will receive that tax bill from the tax commissioner with a new line item on their tax bill that will, that will show that they are members of CID. And then of course, the tax revenues will be collected in the October, November, and December timeframe. After the county collects the taxes, then the portion that belongs to the CID will then be, will be transferred to the CID.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
If you open the window up and I want to participate in 2016 and that window's closed, can other people join in later? Or is it a no or nothing, now or never transaction?
After the window closes in 2016, then we will move into our phase two. And in the phase two process, they will become, they will become members in 2017 at that point.
Mr. McDowell, also, is this, you had mentioned this is an opportunity to join the CID? So this is totally voluntary?
Yes.
So we have a lovely little Main Street with small businesses. So, you know, five mills may be a lot to them. So they won't be, you know, there's no pressure for them to, to join this. And I guess a part of this is improvements and streetscapes and all of that. Now, do you go around them because they're not players, or?
I was gonna ask if you could explain the opting in process because it's not, it's voluntary to an extent.
It is, it's, the criteria is that when you turn in the paperwork for the expansion, then in order to include a property that is consenting, it has to be continuous. So if we, we have a property, say that's six parcels away that has signed the documents and the parcels between numbers, that six parcel and the existing parcel that's already in the CID. If none of those sign, then in order to include that parcel, that six parcels away, we would have to include those that are in between as well. So a majority of the, of the parcels that you are included in your expansion would have to be consenting. So there is a possibility that a non-consenting parcel could be included in, in the expansion in order to include the ones that are consenting. And we are very sensitive that there are, there are small property owners. And our intent is to, is to try not to include anyone who is, who is not consenting. There are some guidelines of how we can do that. There, if you have exempt property or...
Exactly like property owned by our City Development Authority?
Correct. So if you have exempt...
Or a church.
So if you have exempt property or if you have other property that is not eligible to be part of the CID or if there's a road that could get us to that parcel that's far away, then we are able to draw the boundary line around those parcels without having to include those. If there is no other way to get to that parcel, then we would have to consider including those parcels that were, that did not necessarily sign their paperwork. And what, what we intend to do, if it comes down to that, to visit with each one of those property owners and if they're, if they are certainly are not wanting to be part of the CID, then that parcel that's way out there may end up being included in 2017 and not in 2016. So if we have every intent to only include those who are wanting to be part of the CID. And then for the others, we know it's an educational process as well as it's a value proposition. You want to be able to show the value that CID will bring to the city and something. So that's why we have it as a two-phase approach. But we are very sensitive that we, we are coming out of a hard recession and that there are some property owners and business owners that are still recovering. And we have no intent of placing a hardship on any property owner.
Because it's not, it's not just our small downtown that we're concerned about. I've talked to a major property owner who just says, right now, you know, Fulton County's just gone up on their taxes. We passed a one-mill tax for fire safety on buildings over X number of stories. And economically for them, now's a bad time for, for the CID.
Exactly. And as we've been talking to property owners since November, we've had some property owners to tell us the exact thing. And they've even said, it's not in the budget for 2016, but I can put it in the budget for 2017. We definitely will take that into consideration. And at the end of, at the end of the day, CID's have been a very positive initiative in communities. And we want it to be a positive initiative in Hayville. And we certainly do not want to put a hardship on any property owner or definitely any business owner. You're talking to someone who grew up in rural North Carolina in a home where my father was a business owner for all of my growing up here. I certainly understand the position that property owners and business owners are in. And we would do our very best not to place any hardship on anybody.
Well, and I might further add that it's been brought out in several regional publications that Hayville has the highest mileage rate of anyone, I believe, in Fulton County. And so if we add the one and we add the five, that again, and I believe during the recession, the commercial properties are the ones who, I guess, suffered the least. So their valuations, assessments did not go down as much as the property owners in residential areas. So this does sound like a bit more to put on them. So, but I guess if they had the option to say yes or no, then I think that's the main thing.
And I can, what I can tell you, in College Park, we had a similar situation where College Park Main Street is not part of the CID for that very reason. And we have done the same thing with College Park that we are planning to do here. It's made the educational process. And then even if they still do not, are not able to be... And then even if they still do not, are not able to be part of the CID, and then we, we move on. And hopefully, in, in future years, when there's a, when there's a better economic times, maybe it'll be a better proposition for those property owners in the future.
Does this five mills go on indefinitely, based on two fives and sells that property?
Yes, yes, it's based on the property itself. And, but, but keep in mind, CID has a six-year lifecycle. So at the end of, and so two things will happen. Annually, just as you set millage, the board of directors for the CID will set their millage rate. So keep in mind that the board members are property owners. And so they set their millage annually. So it could go up or down annually. And, and there, and CID have been around the metro area now for 25-plus years, and there have been times when they've lowered the millage. And there has been, in the 25-plus years history of CID's in Georgia, no CID has ever gone over five mills. But there have been some that have gone down to five, four, three, two. Secondly, at the end of six years, all existing members would have to vote if they will, if they want to renew the CID for another six years or to dissolve the CID. And so that happens at the end of six years. And again, I will tell you, the history of CID's in Georgia, and of all the CID's that exist, no CID has ever dissolved. They have all renewed for another six years. And I think that is testament to the value and the benefit that it brings to the community. So, so that's, so the millage is set by the board members, and that millage is set annually. And then going back to Airport West, which was started in 2014, we will move forward for six years, and then at the end of six years, the board will vote to renew for another six years or to dissolve the CID.
Any other questions for Mr. McDowell?
You have my contact information there, you have our end report and some of my presentation material. You have my cell number, my email. If you have any other questions, or you want to sit down and talk a little more about CID's and what they've done in other communities, and what some possibilities are here in Hayfield, feel free to reach out to me and call me at any time, either I or someone from my staff. We have a public safety director who will work, who worked with the Fulton Police Department. We have a program that works director, who worked with economic development folks and, and other staff members. And so any of us, whoever it would be appropriate, will be more than happy to sit down with you and answer any questions you may have in the future.
So I have a quick question. Our timeline is really short, so a month, right? My-
Well, well, keep in mind, we started back in November.
Okay.
Yes, we, we started back in November, and, and we've, we've been keeping score. And so, so far, in my last report that I received from the consultant, we had 59 property owners in, in Hayfield who told us that they were not interested in being part of the CID. We, we, so we know the ones who are not interested. We are planning a, a public meeting on March 17. And that's going to be the final push, in the final meeting, where, where we will invite the property owners out, and I believe the meeting is going to be held here, in this room. And so we'll have that meeting, and we will give the property owners the last, the last opportunity to ask questions, to, to gain another, a, a, a better understanding of the process, and what a CID could bring to their, to them as a property owner and as a business owner. And then we'll look, and we'll see where we are after that March 17 meeting. And then we'll, we'll make the decision for what the, where the expansion, which properties will be included in the expansion, and we'll turn the paperwork into Fulton County come April, April 1. So, so, so it's, it's not, we're just not getting here. We've been, we've been working and talking with the property owners and having meetings since November, one-on-one meetings, or in other type of communication since, since November. Yes.
I just wanted to hear one more time, because I'd heard differently, that if some kind of group signed on to this, that others had to follow suit, whether they wanted to or not. You're saying that's not the case. And if you're sandwiched between two people that want it and you can't do it, you're never going to be forced to do it?
No, 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 you, you possibly could be included if you do not.
What if it's a financial hardship?
Right, right, and we would take that into consideration, absolutely.
How would you consider it?
How would we consider it?
Yeah, I mean, like the example?
No, 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 like, for example, if we, if we talk to a property owner, and we've been talking to that property owner since November, and that property owner doesn't come around, then the, the property that's on the other side of that property owner that has, has signed, then we may have to wait until 2017 to include that one, so that we don't have to include that property owner who's not interested. Because we could not, if we have one on either side, then the, the one that's connecting to the other, to the existing properties will be included. But the one that's on the other side of that property owner, we would need that property owner in the middle, in the middle to, to be part of the CID. We, by, by legislation, we could include that one property owner. But we, there are factors that, as I mentioned, that we're going to take into consideration. And if, and if, if it doesn't make sense, and as we've had these communications, like, and we, we know, we, we're putting X's on parcels. Where, where, where I'm telling the consultants, based on what you're telling me, this property is not to be included. It is not to be included. So if we have that case, where if that property owner has an X, that, that property will not be included.
Yeah, this isn't a question of value or enhancement, but if just somebody's bottom line can't handle that, then I would never want them to be included.
Absolutely, right, absolutely.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, there's, there's two options here. One is to let the process play out, and let Gerald and his team run it. It is what it is. Second option would be if you chose to, Gerald has indicated to me that he is open to maybe working with myself and maybe someone from council to take a look at this process, to try to mitigate wherever we could. But again, you have to understand that the statutes tie his hands. You have a property owner on this side that says, yep, we want in. And you have a property owner on this, this side that says, yes, I want in. And the one that's, they touch, says, no, I don't. Well, guess what? They don't have a choice.
And it's not really anything the city can stop on, because this is a voluntary taxation.
So the only way we can steer this is, is to, to try to phase it around as best we can. And there will be winners and losers. I mean, I'll just, but, but the process is set by state statute, is not controlled by us. But he is willing to let us help if you-
Right, and, and what I would say to you this evening is, you, you're, as the executive director, I will certainly look at the situation, and, and if I need to go and, and have a sit-down meeting with the property owner, I will make a recommendation to my board not to include a property owner. If, if I feel very strongly that there's, that property owner should not be included. But we want to try to make the case in that, in that, in that instance, where, where we can talk about potential projects, and, and then we'll, we'll try to make, make the case. And if the property owner doesn't come around, then it's, it's my recommendation to, to the board to include or not to include. And, and you're, I'm someone who's very sensitive to property owners and business owners. And I am not, I do not intend to place, for the CID, to place a hardship on any parcel when I make my recommendations to my board. Now, I can make a recommendation to the board, and as William indicated, the board could say, we want to include that property. And then statute will allow that property to be included. So that's a possibility.
Mr. McDowell, you said 59 said no. How many have said yes?
Sixteen so far.
Sixteen have said yes. And is the part you're trying to pull in to annex, to pull in to, and, and to add to the CID West, is that strictly city limits of Hayfield? Because you mentioned Portia, which of course is not in our city limits.
Of Fulton County.
It's, it's Fulton County.
So you're just trying to fit, we're just part of what you're trying to do. The city of Hayfield is just part of that.
That's correct. We, we're also expanding on Old National. We're, we're also expanding on Kent Creek Parkway. We're also expanding on Buffington Road. So it's not just Hayfield, it's all over the existing CID.
So not to be a nabob, but would if the 59 tell the 16, you know, we don't want any of this? So, I mean, it's, Hayfield, doesn't the city limits have to participate?
If, if the 59- I'll say that one more time.
If the 59 who have said no, get with the 16 who said yes and say, you know, this is really not that great idea, do you want your taxes to go up five mills? Then we are not required to participate in the CID.
And we will move forward with the 16.
And move forward with the 16.
Okay.
Who have to pull up the census.
Okay, so it doesn't matter what's contiguous or not?
Oh, no, it has to be, it has to be. But I can figure right now the 16 are, the 16, the 16 are.
Okay. All right, I think that's it for me.
So, so the question is, do you want him to just continue on and just keep us posted? Or would you like to appoint someone to work directly with the process to help mitigate the impact as best we can? It's, you know, option A or option B.
I don't understand what mitigate means, or you're trying to-
Well, arm twisting.
No, no, you, you know your, your property owners and your business owners better than we do. And, and you know what, what value, what would be valuable to your city better than, than we, we would. And so you, so you can tell us, if we're only on a certain block or a certain street, and there are 10 parcels, and we have four of those parcels, would it, would it make sense for us to continue to talk to the other six? Or not? You can tell us that better than, than we would know for ourselves. What we're doing right now, we just look at, look at, ask someone who's been, who's been contacting these property owners, and the only thing that we know is that that person or that individual or that entity owns the parcel. We don't have historical data about what's going on in your city for the past 25 years. And where, what, of course, we're talking to staff about future projects and future plans, and what the CID, how the CID can come and partner with your city. And so if there's a particular project that will be on that street, then we can talk and we can show you how the CID could partner with the city. And then you can communicate that to those six parts of property owners and see if that changes their mind. And if not, then we would just move on. But it, it would be, I think it would be very helpful, especially after the March 17 meeting, to be able to sit down with someone who can, who can look at where we are and help us make those final decisions. And so that it would, it would not be done blindly, and, and, and no one would have a hardship placed on them unintentionally. Because we may have a parcel that we did not make contact with, for example. And we may need that parcel to connect another one. You may have, you, you may know the history of that parcel or that property owner or that business owner. And, because if there are some owners that we have not made contact with yet, and you can help us with that.
See, and as I understand it, it affects the owners and not necessarily the business owners. For example, I, I don't own my building. But if my landlord was hit with that for the whole quarter, then my lease, I guarantee on, the next cycle's going to go up, which means my sandwiches are going to open, which means my profits are going to-
And for, and for that reason, because I, I've been in the CID world now for 11 years. And so the, some, some of the value that a CID may bring to an area will, would benefit the property, the business owner. It would benefit the business owner. And the property owner is saying no. And so it is March 17 meeting, we, we are inviting some business owners, like yourself. And that business owner can tell their property owner, this would be good for us, because it would help increase business, and it, and it would help create the value of the area around us. And so the owner, the business owner can then tell the property owner that that would be a, a good thing to do. Or vice versa. The, the business owner can tell that property owner, this might be good for you, but it's not good for me. Please don't sign that piece of paper. So, so at the end of the day, my, my intent is to, is if, because we've had property owners who express a desire to be part of the CID, and in order to get to those property owners, we had to talk to others through this whole process. If we come out of it, and there are 150 property owners, and, and if we only end up with 16 that are wanting to be part of the CID, we can move forward with just those 16. And, and we would not have to include any additional ones as it stands today. You know, we, we could get a form in tomorrow, and then all of a sudden, it creates a situation where, uh-oh, now we got to talk to six property owners who said no in order to include that new one that comes in, say, tomorrow. So as it stands today, though, 16, if you're coming from where Virginia Avenue connects with, is it Loop Road and goes over to Portia? That's the area now where most of those property owners are. And then there are a couple of, of parcels just right at the border of the existing CID, so we can just include those and there's no one between them. So, so right now, we, you don't have any parcels that are saying, that have said no, who would be in jeopardy of being included, as it stands today. We would, I will try my best to keep it that way.
Okay. So y'all want to let the process work itself through? Or does somebody want to volunteer to, to sit down and be a part of the process?
Well, as much as I try to be business in Hayfield, I don't know that many of the property owners. I don't know that I could add any more input to what your group has already done. You know, I just don't know that I'm value-added. Yeah.
We'll, we'll continue to work with staff, and then you can proceed to update. You'll, you'll know where we stand before we go to Fulton County.
Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you, Gerald. Appreciate it. Do I push this button? Yeah, just turns off, sorry about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll back up, because I skipped right over, I had four informal discussion of agenda items. So I will start with, we've got a public hearing tonight on a couple of matters. We have 2016 dash 03, the video ordinance. Anybody got any questions or comments on that? Okay, next item is 2016 dash 05, the extended stay of bill. I know we talked last time about everybody kind of looking back through that. Has everybody got a chance to review that to your satisfaction? Or you want some more time on this?
I haven't. Yeah, I haven't had time. So I would actually like to skip over this.
Are we, are we out on that tonight?
This is second hearing.
Public hearing, so this will be the second reading?
The date extends to the date certain. If you're, if you're going to table, you would need to proceed to the extended stay.
Okay. Date certain at the time.
Okay, I can do that.
Is there a burning need to get this done?
Well, I'd like to get some, several million dollars on the tax roll. Other than that, no.
I don't, I'm not aware of that. All right, and the next item we have is the 2016 dash 04, with applied property tax. This is under all business. I think everybody's had a chance to cover that. Then the discussion of the alcohol ordinance. You have language in front of you tonight for what, what I will refer to, not in a derogatory way, but as a mandate to address some of the needs that have been raised by a couple of our business owners. And based upon some comments that I received from a business owner Friday, when we get to the regular meeting at 7, I would entertain a motion to modify the agenda to have this as first reading of this, of that ordinance. So I think there was a question that came up about the date. Michael, would you explain the date that came up? Okay, Steve, could you explain the, that, that question came up about, because it states in here, this exemption shall remain in effect until June 30, 2016, or until the effective date of the city's pending comprehensive update of Chapter 5 of the Alcohol Emergency Code, whichever occurs sooner. So what if we miss that date? Or are you concerned about missing that date?
Two things. Thing number one is that if anybody applies, receives their license prior to that date, they'll be grandfathered after that date. Thing number two is I'm fairly certain we can meet that date. Actually, thing number three is if we don't meet that date, we can extend it again.
That should solve the, the question that was raised about that. Then we have consideration and action to use the non-competitive renegotiation for purchasing a ladder truck for the fire department. We will have a presentation on that. Any questions on that item? Pretty mature, maybe, until we have a presentation. And then the next item, 2016 dash 12. This is a resolution to create a statutory development authority. Due to some issues that have come up surrounding the Solus Hotel project, I'll get into all the legalese that are at the regular meeting. But there, there is developed a need for us to create a statutory development authority to perform some duties that our constitutionally appointed development authority cannot perform. And I'll have Steve update us at the, at the meeting on, on the details of that when we get into the regular meeting. Anybody have any questions on that? It's a complicated issue. All right, next item is discussion and consideration of IT purchases, Liberty Technology proposal, some equipment to, you should have got a little email late Saturday, will take some of the revised three-year lease option, that'll spread cash out, and we are, we're dire negative upgrading PCs. Anybody have any questions on that? All right, so any other agenda items that I've missed?
I do on this, these are just PCs, not a server or anything. Is the server okay?
So far, crossing our fingers, server's making it. What we're doing is, these are the most, like, what we refer to as life support type situations that they could go anytime. We feel okay about the servers, but we.
It won't be long down the road.
It won't be long, so what we're doing is, when you're preparing, when you're proceeding, I have given an order to the IT staff to begin preparing the five-year technology plan. And that technology plan will be rolled forward for your consideration during the budget process, so that we can allocate resources next fiscal year towards those larger items, hoping that nothing happens between now and then. But if it does, then we'll have to address it.
Are we, do we have any monitors or any things?
Yeah, audio monitors.
Audio monitors?
Yes.
Do you know what to ask for?
Uh, no, but the fellow from Liberty will be here at 7:00, he'll be at 7:00, so he can ask questions.
Yeah.
I think it's in the detail in the proposal, but he, he'll be here at 7:00.
21.5-inch Acer monitor. Okay, any other questions or comments on our agenda? All right, now, city manager report, William?
Service Mayor. Basically, our strategic planning retreat is coming up, it's coming Saturday on the 2nd of March. There was some back and forth about the exact time. Right now, it is set at 8:30. If you need to move it up, I'll need to know tonight. But basically, we're ready to go as it's been forwarded out to you, so we just need some feedback as to whether y'all want to move it up or not.
Well, are we ending at 2:00, or are we ending at 3:00?
We can end at 3:00. Myself and Michael, myself and Michael, I have to depart by 2:00. I have a retirement at Fort Gillum to go to, just seeing out.
He has to go at 2:00 also.
And you have to go at 2:00 also, because he's got to come with a little.
Would you maybe start at the date?
Staff is okay with it, we just need to know what you, we don't want to just change the time without talking to you all, we would like to know.
Y'all get with 8:00, 8:30 or half?
I would like to have the whole agenda covered with everybody.
Eight, start at 3:00. As you want. Yeah, what we could do is move it up to 8:00 as a start, and then if you want to work through the breaks, there's a couple of breaks you could work through, and I think we could, you know, take it and do a little.
Not for the bad.
If that works, please.
All right, so I just ruined my sleep.
I know.
I had to be working.
That's why you have Saturday, you sleep so.
Next item is the Aerotropolis meeting is coming up on the 24th of March, and I will be, with your permission, traveling to the Georgia City County Management Association meeting in Athens, and will be out of town during that timeframe, so Mayor, you or Ruth will need to fill in.
And that's the 20, what was the date?
Thursday to 24th, that leaves the date. Looking to turn that with you.
What time is that, David?
It starts generally at 1:00. They have a little lunch thing right before that.
I'll do my best to do it in there, but I'll let you know.
But the main point being is, if it's okay for me to proceed with my plans to attend the Georgia City.
Well, we will, we will get it covered.
When does it begin?
Oh, 2:00? Okay. 2:00. 2:00. Yeah, they changed their round a little bit, yeah, 2:00. Okay, and then the other thing is, the citizens' chalkboard opportunity in the budget that we've been talking about, is actually going to happen? I have been successful in getting ourselves a wonderful, wonderful intern from Georgia State University. This young man has a mast, is working on his master's degree, and Hunter, stand up and wave him. Hunter, Hunter is working with me to organize the citizens' chalkboard, so if you have questions about that, just see Hunter or myself, and that's, we're going to go over that at the strategic planning retreat, so that you all kind of nail down with us, you know, what dates and, you know, format and all of that, so we'll be getting into all that particulars with you on Saturday. And I'm really excited, it's going to be a great meeting, I think it's going to be very helpful for us. And then finally, at the end of the month, with council's permission, I'd like to tape the day, the 31st, and be out of town that weekend, because my youngest daughter, Emily, is getting married, so my last one will be out of the nest.
Congratulations.
And we need prayers for all that to go well, and.
And money, prayers and money.
Yes, exactly.
All right, congratulations.
For me, sir.
All right, we'll go to our departmental updates, I'm going to start with you, Todd.
Oh, I don't have anything else to do.
I've got some things moving on.
We had some winners.
Yes, we did, we had our 18, 12s, and 14-year-old boys.
That's worthy.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Our 18s, 12s, and 14-year-old boys all won the Georgia Recreation Parks Association District Tournament this weekend. They'll be advancing to the state tournament this coming weekend, so they'll be traveling to Haversham County, and as well in Effingham County, Savannah, and Carrollton as well. That's all I have.
Alia Bryan?
We completed our.
Get him high.
Thank you. We completed our annual Opportunity Zone Report, we got that into BCA, and we just had our first of the South Arts Film Series last Friday. We had a great crowd, thanks to everybody who came. And we just received early notification that we've been awarded the grant again for next year, so that contract will be on the next agenda. And we have a Tri-Cities Merchant Mixer coming up on March 22nd in East Point. That's about it.
Awesome, thank you. You can hand that mic to Bill Johnston, Bill.
Mayor Council, I think you already know that the LCI study update was awarded from ARC. Budget estimate on that is $79,000, some change. The Land Region Commission tells us that this is the first opportunity to have an LCI update in conjunction with a comprehensive plan update. Comprehensive plan update is due October of this year, and I understand it's the first in the region that's going to be doing those in tandem, so that should give us a little publicity as that process unfolds. That's all I have.
Awesome, thank you. Todd?
I don't have anything at this time.
Jennifer?
We are, need to consider board appointments on our next agenda.
Okay, do you want me?
We need to consider board appointments for our next agenda for the, we had one to resign from the Design Review Committee, and then you had mentioned also additional appointments need to be made to the Clean and Beautiful.
Design Review appointments and Clean and Beautiful appointments.
And that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Did we find out if we can do Clean and Beautiful appointments?
I believe.
Yeah.
That we can.
I thought it was a state statute or something.
That's my.
Thanks, thank pardon.
Do you have a little thing to do on that?
Okay.
Jim Houston's not able to be with us tonight, his mother-in-law passed away, so please keep his family in your thoughts and prayers. Lee?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Chief Lafferty?
Mayor, I have really nothing to report at this time, we're just, we're working on our budget, so it's keeping us busy.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Mr. Fenshaw?
Nothing, no legal.
Nothing, no legal? All right, David Burke?